The Latina panel was second, it was September. Yeah, I'm almost certain it was September, like I, I, it wasn't like, because they were saying how like you would be kind of doing with the tail and then just look back while they're like. I'm sure about that.
Looks like the, the worst of it is gonna be south of us, it looks like.
Really? Oh, that they've just got.
Like Wilmer, Litchfield.
Name of the area?
No, like Wilmer and Litchfield is gonna be the middle of it.
Andale, I got Neil looks like.
In twenty-six minutes.
It felt cool when he walked in, just goes hot.
Listen to this anyway. Period, just. I wonder if it was for elections.
Oh, you're probably right.
I bet that that was something that you.
Hey.
And I was like, I don't know how she did that, but it worked. Cause it said there that, and then I looked from the.
I don't know.
It is what it is like, I, yeah, we can, like, we gotta hold the bus in the direction. That's fine.
I have a couple of extra students, so I have a car.
Socks.
Oh, so you told me I shouldn't, I looked for the basket, you forgot to our socks.
Should be, he's on the golf course today.
It's like.
Someone on the night. You will only affect that south house on night. Carrie. Carrie, Carrie.
Coming in, right?
What else is true?
I know.
Alright, it is six o'clock, we'll call the order and start a city council meeting for Monday, August twenty-sixth, please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Council, the first agenda item is the agenda review and adoption, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. We have no special presentations and no one signed up for open forum, public comment. Onto approval of city council minutes from our August twelfth, regular city council, look for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item six consent agenda, we have items A through G. Would look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G.
There's a motion to approve the full slate, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, are there any discussions for the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, we are on to new business, we have the twenty twenty-four utility rate study.
Mayor, council, good evening, I'm Jessica Green with Northland Securities, uh, my colleague Tammy Umdahl and I have been working with city staff through a utility rate study. And the findings of that study and a report are included in your council packet this evening. That report is, is quite lengthy, um, I believe it's about seventy pages, so rather than have you sit through, um, a review of that entire report, we've prepared a brief presentation for you to go over some of the high level details and findings of the study. So if it's okay with council, what we'll plan to do is just kind of dive in, if you do have any questions as we go, please let me know, we can also, um, sort of dive into that report after the fact as well. Sound good? Great. Okay, so first, what we're going to cover, um, with the presentation tonight is some information related to the study objectives. And what we talked about with staff as we were starting to work on the utility study. We'll talk about the conclusions and recommendations and we like to get those out upfront so that you've got some context as we're going into some of the financial information. And then also looking at the utility rates and the customer impacts. Okay, so when we first started talking with city staff about the objectives for the study, um, we're looking at, of course, providing information, uh, to evaluate proposed rates going forward, looking at what the charges for services are. And then one of the things that we learned from city staff is that the city is also interested in encouraging conservation, so we looked at some changes to the existing rate structure. Um, particularly so for water, and then we also are looking at some changes for storm water as well. We looked at your existing plans, so, um, capital improvement plans, we looked at some projections related to budgeting, um, and then also looked at your customer data. So we looked at that on an account basis, looking at volume and how much, um, each account is using, as we're looking, um, at projecting the utility rates going forward, making sure that we have sufficient revenue to cover the operations of the utility. And then finally, looking at providing recommendations, uh, to the city on planning for certain major capital improvements. And financing of those improvements when that's necessary for the funds. So getting into those conclusions and recommendations, again, we want you to have those upfront as we walk through, um, the presentation here tonight. So, looking at, um, setting rates that are sufficient to fund your operations, meet your debt service needs and then also provide for annual capital improvements. We do have a number of increases that are planned for each of the utility funds, um, less so with water and storm water and then higher increases for sanitary sewer rates. So within the planning period, and you'll hear us talk about that throughout the presentation, the specific period that we're looking at here is twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-three. And for water rates, looking at an average annual increase of about three percent per year. Sanitary sewer rates about nine percent on average per year, as we get further into the presentation, you'll see that it's some pretty large increases in the first, um, few years, so in the near term, and then moderating from there. And then about one percent average, um, for the storm water rates, and we have made some changes to how the city, or suggested changes, I should say, recommendations for how the city charges for storm water. Um, for various account types. When it comes to the financial management of the utility funds, um, I'm sure council is familiar with when we're talking about utility funds, talking about them as enterprise funds or business type activities. And what that really gets at is that you're looking to charge rates that are sufficient to cover, um, the operations of the utility. Um, so with that, we also like to identify a target or a minimum cash position to maintain the health of those utilities. So we look at, uh, maintaining cash that covers at least three months of operating expenses. We also want to make sure that you're covering your debt service and that you're collecting enough for next year's debt service payment in advance of that payment coming up. And then also ensuring that you've got enough to cover any pay-go capital acquisitions, et cetera, before you make that purchase, when you're able to do that. So findings for the specific funds, um, with the water fund, our position is that the water fund is in sound financial condition, meaning that revenues are sufficient to cover expenses. Um, we do have, again, those planned increases about three percent per year. And then a split of one additional, um, FTE between water and sewer, so that's why we've got one half FTE here. And then a combination of cash and bonding covering, um, some of the capital improvements that are planned for the city. So we have debt issuance that's anticipated in twenty-five, six, seven, and then twenty-nine and thirty. And that debt issuance is estimated to finance about twenty-three million of about thirty and a half million of projects, um, that are currently programmed in your CIP. So we talked a little bit about that cash balance, again, we want to maintain at least three months of operating, um, revenues along with covering debt service and your pay-as-you-go capital. And as you can see, um, the ending cash position and that desired, uh, minimum ending cash position, they tend to follow each other, um, throughout the planning period. And then we start to see some cash building towards the end, and that is done on purpose. Um, the city has a number of projects that aren't currently planned for in your CIP. But what we learned in talking to staff is that the city's position is that you'd like to be on a pay-go basis, rather than issuing debt when you have projects. So when we see that cash position building, it's putting you into a position to be able to cover, um, projects as you move forward. Not necessarily that you won't have to ever borrow again for water projects, but again, just putting you in a better position to support those projects with at least some cash contribution. We also talked with staff about, um, plans for development and what the city is anticipating for adding new residents or commercial, um, projects here in the city. And ultimately, we settled on about eighty new customers annually, and sometimes it'll be more, sometimes less, but the plan is meant to be long-term. Um, with about an average use of sixty-five thousand cubic feet per year. So this graph is simply just showing what we would anticipate, um, for additional customer base and then also volume build. And then here we're looking at the impact on what we would consider an average water user, so here about twelve thousand cubic feet per billing period, and just as a reminder, the city bill, uh, bills, excuse me, on a bi-monthly basis. So what you can see here is that for this water user, for example, we have about fifty dollars per billing period here in twenty-four. And that increasing up to about sixty dollars out to twenty thirty-three. You see this bit of a dip and then it comes up again, again, that's on average about three percent per year. And what's happening here is because we're, um, suggesting that the city implements some tiers with your rate structure, currently you have a single tier for all customer types. So now we're looking at introducing some tiers, so three tiers, a low and a medium and a high, um, so that those that are, um, using more water are paying more for the operations of the utility. Any questions on water before we get into sewer?
One I'll bring up is, is on this slide particularly, so understand the tier, uh, have saw that, really appreciate that, why does it jump back up?
Because we're increasing fees as we go, um, and that is meant to cover sort of inflationary pressures for operating. We do some forward looking, um, in the pro forma and we try to estimate where those expenses are going. So while we're coming down in twenty-five for this user, we are going to see some pressure on the rates, just again, to keep up with inflationary pressures.
Okay, so the dip is the moving, without an increase, it's moving to a tiered and then the twenty twenty-sixth, um, is simply sa- I mean, similar water usage, but bringing it back up from increases.
Exactly, yep.
Council, any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, so the sanitary sewer fund, again, our position here is that the sewer fund is in sound financial condition. Um, for the most part, looking at revenues meeting, uh, or covering expenses, we will see in the near term that revenues will not be sufficient to cover expenses, so in the next few years. Now, that will correct itself based on, um, the projections that are made and the recommended changes to the utility rates. Um, again, looking at about nine percent, um, per year to kind of get the city into a position of covering those operating costs and then also what we're anticipating for debt service costs, which are going to, um, increase pretty substantially in the next couple of years, based on some of the capital projects. Um, again, looking at that half, um, FTE coming in for sewer in twenty-seven. And then bonding anticipated, um, for the years, and here we have twenty-four through twenty-eight. The reason that we've included twenty-four here is that the city has, um, taken on some expenses this year related to sewer. However, rather than have you do a standalone bond issuance to cover that, you do have some other projects coming in twenty-five. So the city will reimburse itself for, um, costs that have been incurred here in twenty-four. So same thing here, just looking at, um, that ending cash position that's projected, along with what we would, um, like to see for a desired minimum ending cash position. Staying very close to each other, dipping a bit below there for, um, a period of time, not long enough, um, to be super concerning, but of course, we do have those rate increases, um, built into the plan and then, like we saw in water, starting to build cash and move the city into a position where you're not having to borrow for the entirety of the capital projects that you have planned. And again, we see those eighty or so users added with sixty-five thousand cubic feet per year per customer. And then here's where we see those larger jumps in the, um, the near term. So, what we have currently is, uh, say eighty dollars, um, per billing period here in twenty-four. And that inching up, um, closer to about a hundred and ninety dollars out in twenty thirty-three, so growing pretty substantially here. Um, and having some, on a percentage basis, some larger increases for sewer. Um, that is due to the fact that sewer has a number of capital projects that are going to be coming online, um, in the next few years. And that debt service is gonna start to build pretty quickly. So to get to a position that this, this fund has sufficient revenues to cover those costs, um, it does require some pretty significant changes, um, in the next couple of years and then moderating quite considerably after that, but on an average basis, looking at about nine percent, um, per year here. Any questions that I could answer on sewer before we get into storm water?
One thing I just would add on this is just keep in mind the difference between, for us, sewer versus water and storm water, much of the sewer fund is because we're, we are paying debt through Saint Cloud. So our sewer is, uh, we purchased through Saint Cloud, and so a lot of this is debt through Saint Cloud that we owe them for their system. So, little bit of a difference between sewer and then water and storm water for us. Just thought I'd give that clarifying factor for you guys all.
Great point, and I would point out that, um, in the capital improvement plan and some of the improvements that are programmed for sewer, about a third of that debt, maybe a little bit more than that actually, is related to the Saint Cloud system. So, it is putting quite a bit of pressure on your water, or excuse me, your sewer rates. And then the other thing that we want to be mindful of is that we're anticipating some additional costs as being, um, a part of that system. So those disposal charges, we want to make sure that you're in a good position to handle those as you go forward as well.
If I heard you right there, a third of this is tied to Saint Cloud, two thirds is would be tied to our own projects?
Correct.
Okay.
And it might be a smidge over a third for the Saint Cloud portion, but yes, approximately.
Quick question related to the calculation on sewer, I know currently it's based on water usage, are there any anticipated changes there?
For residential, no, it'd still be based on water usage throughout the winter months and into the early spring, but for our commercial and industrial, uh, what we're going to be trying to work on is having them build, um, on their actual volume throughout that billing period for sewer, so rather than setting it in the winter and the early spring, um, billing it based on the volume that they use in water throughout the entirety of the year.
Quick follow-up question, um, so, as if I recall, we, this billing is based on intake of water into the house and they just assume the external is obviously comes out eventually.
Right, yep, or it becomes troublesome as the, the summer months when they're irrigating and they're consuming a lot of water, but it's not actually
going into the, yeah, sewer system. Okay, and can you go back one slide? Oh, I'm sorry, two slide, there we go. So, the end there in twenty thirty, when we start to see a significant ending cash position increase, um, versus our desired minimum. Would dropping that slope down of the blue line decrease our overall increase in fees? If we just gradually went and say, it seems like it's relatively extreme going up on the, they're like, you're overbilling me to get to this high point. Um, is there a way to, or is that maybe explained better within the billing cycle? To say, we're not gouging you to get to this high point, we're keeping it as simple within the billing, monthly billing?
Sure, um, so a couple of things here, so if we were to moderate or recommend more moderate changes to your fee structure. Um, one, we'd see that, um, that blue line dip quite a bit below the green line, um, especially in the early years. Um, so certainly you could get to a position with less cash. Um, what I will say is that in the CIP for the city, um, looking out beyond sort of this ten-year, um, forward look, you do have, I, I wanna say it's twenty-some million dollars in projects that are not programmed. So, our understanding, based on our conversations with staff, is that the city would like to get to a position where you're not having to borrow. And as we said, we've got about thirty-one million dollars or so in projects that you're gonna borrow for in the next five years. Um, this gets you into a position to do that, um, we do think that the increases in the near term are necessary. Now, if you get to a position in the out years and you say, you know what, we're building too much cash and your operations, et cetera, are not increasing to the degree that we're anticipating they will, you could certainly reduce rates at that time if you wanted to. If, again, if you don't have pressure on the operations. But based on what we're seeing and again, wanting to get to that position of using cash, this feels, um, like you're working into that, um, pay-as-you-go, um, situation.
I think, thank you, and probably appropriate to go to storm sewers at this point.
Okay, so the storm water fund, also in sound financial condition, revenues are sufficient to cover expenses. Um, very moderate changes here, about one percent annually, um, we are planning for one FTE, storm water specialist coming, um, and joining the city in twenty twenty-seven. We do have some debt issuance planned here, uh, but to say that, um, we've got about nineteen point seven million of storm utility projects. There is a very large grant contribution coming in here, along with a combination of cash and debt. So in twenty-five, six and seven, uh, financing about four point eight million of those nineteen point seven million dollars of projects that you currently have programmed. In the storm water fund, we are also looking at changing not necessarily structure, but how the city currently charges different classifications for storm water. So, the city will be, um, doing some research and review as to how, uh, non-residential, um, customer classifications are charged. So currently, the way that the city is charging is, is very close to what is, um, charged for, so a residential property is charged very similarly to a commercial property. Where you have, um, perhaps a lot of parking, impervious surface, larger acreage, that sort of thing. So staff has been discussing how to review all of the different property classifications and start charging differently for those larger properties versus residential. Okay, so with the storm water fund, again, looking at sort of how the, um, ending cash position and the desired cash position follow each other, and then in the out years, again, building cash for those unprogrammed, but in the CIP, but in the out years. Again, moving you into a position to use cash to cover those costs. Same thing here, about eighty new residential equivalent units here added per year, um, not worried about volume, of course, with the storm water fund. And then here's those utility fees, so currently in twenty twenty-four, um, for a residential customer, about sixteen dollars, increasing that to sixteen fifty out into twenty-five, and then you've got a quarter increase for the next couple of years and then staying flat there at seventeen dollars, um, per, um, bi-monthly billing period. Um, a couple of slides here on the bonds outstanding, so currently the city has, um, about twenty-two, twenty-three million that are outstanding, um, for utilities. And that increasing up to about fifty-five, fifty. for utilities and that increasing up to about fifty five, fifty six million, um, and then moderating after twenty thirty. And then looking at the annual debt service for the utility funds, just shy of three million currently, um, getting up closer into that five and a half to six million dollar range and then starting to moderate from there. And then finally, the comparison to other cities. So what we do is we take a look at some of the comparable cities and here's a list, um, that we've been provided by city stack to compare Sartell against. And what we do is we we try to, um, take apples and oranges and make them as similar as possible. Everyone charges differently, whether that's based on cubic feet or by gallons, and then of course, everyone has different tier structure. So we do our best to kind of, um, make them as comparable as possible. But what we have here is, um, based on cities that were chosen to compare against, Sartell's current fees are the lowest of the bunch. So that's, um, at the very bottom there. One step up from there is what we are projecting for the twenty twenty five fees, based on the recommendations that are in the plan. The one thing I would note here is that we're not able to really guess at what those comparable cities are going to be in in twenty five. We really only have the data here for what Sartell's look like, looks like in twenty five. So not able to compare against them, but we would of course imagine that they would be facing some pressures as well. So we would imagine that their fees would be increasing too. But in any case, um, looking at sort of the bottom of the bunch here, based on this particular volume. And then this is their last slide. Um, so recommendation, of course, is to annually, um, review this information. So we provide models back to the city based on, um, the the study that we've done so that the city is able to update those models annually if, um, staff would like to, or certainly you can bring us back in to assist with that. But really looking at, um, the anticipated, um, changes to the regional, um, facility costs because those are certainly impactful, particularly so for sewer. And that, of course, just to be mindful of adopting rates that are sufficient to cover operations, maintenance and debt service for the utilities themselves. With that, I am happy to take any other questions that council may have.
Council, what questions do we have for Jessica or Tammy?
Can you, can you back up to the, um, comparison slide? So that would be the, if, is that the average Sartell household per month? What we're looking at currently versus twenty twenty five and then comparing that roughly to surrounding cities?
I would say this is probably someone that's a bit on the lower end. So here we've got two thousand gallons monthly. So on a bi-monthly basis, about four thousand gallons. Um, so probably a smaller household here. Certainly not a high user. In the plan itself, um, there is some detail related to low, medium and high. Just for brevity for the presentation, we've just included the one, but it is included in the plan.
Thank you.
And so a follow up on that one, uh, understand why we look at twenty twenty five, hard to project anything beyond that. But if all other cities stayed equal, like twenty twenty five, I saw the big drop, right? We talked about that? So I felt like twenty twenty five, we're ahead, yet we're seeing a big drop and then twenty twenty six, we come back up. And so is it fair to say that, hey, if we actually put twenty twenty six in here and again, all other things equal, we're probably between that Saint Joe, Saint Cloud range?
Well, and we want to keep in mind that that drop that you're seeing is just for that particular customer. Because we're introducing those tiers. So we would imagine that those higher, um, or those higher users um, of water, it's not necessarily that you're seeing, um, the total revenue for the utility come down. We're actually anticipating that that will go up. But not knowing or not having top of mind what their tier structures are, really hard to say where that may fall.
It's tons of variables, absolutely understand that. This one seemed like it's a low user and I think your graph was showing us a low user, which would be a low tier.
I believe that one was about twelve thousand gallons per, yeah, per billing period.
Okay, so that, how does, what type of user is that for us? Is that a high user or a low user?
That's medium. Yeah, so that's about six thousand cubic feet per billing period. I'm going to forget how many, um, cubic feet are in a gallon. That, that comparison is again.
So tough to correlate that, okay.
I'm not sure if your best answer, Rob, um, and maybe these enterprise accounts don't qualify. I believe if I remember right, the audit, when we go through that, we look to be within a certain percentage above or below a desired. In these situations where we're two, three times higher in twenty thirty three, do we simply just say planning for future debt or how does that come out of time?
Yeah, so there are some, um, recommendations or sort of guideposts for, um, maintaining a certain level of fund balance. That being said, there's really not, um, a limitation on how much cash you can build, but certainly yes. If the city's position or objective is that you're looking to get into a pay as you go basis for all of your projects. And as we all know, water and sewer projects, storm sewer projects, they're not cheap. So it's several million dollars each time you're doing anything. So yes, while it's looking at six, seven, eight million dollars of cash that's built out, when you look at your CIP, the near term amounts are really going to be more specific than the, even the ones that are in years five through ten. Because we know more specifically what those near term needs are. Um, and I'll just give the example, as as we were going through the study itself, I think we looked at maybe two or three versions of the CIP because things kept changing. And again, it's those near term projects that are going to change the most. So while of course, it does look like cash is building, um, we anticipate that there's going to be changes to those, even in again, those years five through ten. So whether or not you build cash to that level, it's it's really hard to say.
Alex, to that point, and and Tim, as you were talking, I was thinking the same exact thing of, you know, as you get to twenty thirty, it pays to revisit this and they're giving us all the data to revisit it. It is so hard to predict what those funds will do after that point because we can't really accurately predict projects. We have them on our CIP, we don't necessarily plug them into certain years, the dollar amounts with them are, you try, but you never know what inflation's going to do, what what different economic pressures are going to do and so the rates that are being proposed, think near term of what we need to do to get to the point to where we get to twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine of the near term projects that we know for certain have to happen, for Spain Water Tower, things of that nature, West Side Reconstruct. After that, it pays to revisit it and council determine, is the strategy still that you want to build up a bunch of cash? What projects do you have on hand? If you can call out those projects when you're looking at fund balances, you take that into consideration of, yep, you're building this fund balance, but you know this project is coming in twenty thirty one, twenty thirty two. Or perhaps the strategy of council at that point is, we're going to level this off and not pay as much cash because we've been able to control our debt. You know, tax base has gone up, debt policy changes and we want to take out more debt. A lot can change by that point. So just keep that in mind that you almost have to look at this in two different chunks. The first chunk is, how do we get through the debt projects that we have already proposed and make sure that we have a cash balance to meet our financial policies at that point and the projects that we know are slated and need to happen? And then think of it in the next chunk that we, we need to come back and revisit this and we'll have the data to be able to do that to say, is it still our strategy to build up all that cash? What are the near term projects that we're looking at? What are the, you know, engineers' estimates for those? Let's get them updated and not be using twenty twenty four numbers. And then reassess the rates at that point. So it looks like a really big gap right now because we, there's just so much unknown by that point. We should come back and revisit this by twenty thirty.
So Anna and Rob, there, maybe it was a year ago or it seems like it was, you had, you had presented some graphs and we were looking at projects and it looked like the world was going to drop off. It was a, you know, where's our fund, where's these projects? Or how are we going to fund it? Is that what this is trying to alleviate those significant shortfalls that we had in coming projects?
Yep, still accomplishing the projects, but also maintaining a sufficient cash reserve in order to pay for those and finance those projects. So you'll notice the difference between what I presented last year and this year is leveraging more debt to accomplish those projects and to maintain a sufficient cash balance.
As a follow up to that, so clearly see how we would take on debt within each enterprise fund uh, and pay for it from that enterprise fund. Is that how that's been historically or were some of those under general fund or paid for general fund?
No, I think statutorily it has to be for that enterprise fund, taking debt out of that enterprise fund to pay for projects that pertain to water, sewer, storm water. We can't borrow from the general fund or levy taxes into the enterprise funds.
I can speak to that. So all of the utility debt that the city has taken on has been considered general obligation, utility revenue bonds. So whether that's for water, sewer, and they're typically sort of assigned to that particular utility for whatever the project is. But even though the revenue from the utility is meant to be sufficient and within, um, statutory language says that the city will charge, or I should say, um, more in your bond covenants, the city will charge rates that are sufficient to cover operations, maintenance, debt service, all of that good stuff. Uh, but you do have the general obligation pledge behind it. And that means that if there is a shortfall in the revenue, um, from that utility, that you can use your tax levy. It is meant to be sort of a stopgap to get you back into position where those rates are sufficient. But I believe historically for the city, you have supported your utility debt from the utility funds. Whether or not you've had to feather in some tax levy here or there, just due to insufficiency in revenue, not certain about that, but you have been, um, at least in the most recent years, um, performing just fine in terms of your rate covenants.
Awesome. And and what I was, follow up to that, which I think we just answered is, my, uh, question was going to be the impact on our new debt policy. And if this is almost a way of skirting around some of that, but it sounds like the way in which we're proposing is how it's been and statutorily, statutorily how it has to be. Super comfortable in that. I struggle and I think Tim was going there a little bit earlier, I struggle with the significant spikes. And to the point where I also wonder if we factored in any, um, I I guess, personal, um, wells. I I know when we built the house, it was doing the math of, hey, what's it going to cost me to water the lawn versus put a well in? And I know some of our neighbors went the well route. Do we anticipate or has it been anticipated that as we increase our water price, we would actually see a decrease in demand due to private wells? I'm not sure who wants to take that.
Yes, so when, uh, sure, so when you were putting together the model, people that go into the higher tiers and get a little bit of sticker shock, does it, do they naturally use less water? Is that?
It depends. Um, so we are not anticipating within the plan that, um, you'll have people, you know, digging wells for irrigation, that type of thing. We're assuming that based on the growth that the city has seen and is projecting, that you're signing up, of course, for your utility account you're using, I think we used on sixty five thousand cubic feet per year. We're not really making any adjustments for, um, demand on water. Now, certainly, um, we can add that into the study or we can take a look, you know, a couple of years from now is, um, you know, based on the tier structure that's been introduced. But based on some of the literature that we've seen, that we've read, some of the reach, search that we've done, unless you get to a pain point with residents, um, and also you move more towards a monthly billing cycle, you tend not to see a whole lot of behavior change. So unless your, let's say your second tier to your third tier jumps by at least fifty percent, it really doesn't get to the point of impacting that behavior. So certainly it doesn't mean that you won't have people that are putting in a well for irrigation. But the plan currently does not, um, assume that that would be the case. But, um, as Anna was talking about, we do provide you with the models with the data. So if you're managing this and looking at it on an annual basis, because of course, you're looking at your utility funds when you're going through the budget process as well. Now that you do have this tier structure that's introduced, that would be a good thing to take a look at is, are we having an impact on our volume and what's being charged out because we've introduced these tiers and you do have those heavier users, um, paying more for what they're using.
Yeah, I guess my ask of that would just simply be that staff is made aware of what the levers we can pull. We can analyze thirty different scenarios. The biggest impact for us, I think, is that staff knows, hey, our, we're seeing demand go down, that means X, Y and Z and here's what I can pull. I would relate that to the eighty, um, residential equivalents of, I don't know what historically we've achieved. When I saw that, I felt really high. Especially if we see a slowdown in apartment buildings go online. And so again, if we only see forty next year, what levers can we pull? Through all the work that we're doing now to stay in line. Last one, and I, there's probably some others here, um, whack and sack that initial fee, have we analyzed that at all? For the connection fee?
Yep, that was part of the study.
We did take a look at that and it's not top of mind for me currently. I think what we did was we took your, um, current and we're proposing that it gets inflated per year, um, so an annual adjustment to those.
Yeah, so still using the same development, um, assumptions, but also increasing development fees by inflation year over year.
But same structure? Any, Tim?
Well, when we talk, discuss this, um, we usually are inundated with questions from people on fixed incomes that are living, um, you know, retired or whatever. You had a fee in there jumping from, you know, under a hundred dollars to over two hundred dollars at one point. Is that taken into consideration, people that might not have the ability to adjust to something that severe? I mean, that that'll be the question they, that will come when we, when we introduce this or if we adopt something like this. Yeah, that's the fee right there. So if you're under a hundred dollars and you're up around two sixty, that's a significant jump in in people's, um, especially in fixed income.
Certainly. So I wouldn't say that the plan itself is is considering that, right? So we're not saying that there's, um, a program for those that are on a fixed income or something like that. But here, in in providing this plan, it is not meant to be, um, your budget. So it is meant to be sort of a guide as you're making decisions going forward. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to do these increases that we're recommending. If things change with the assumptions that have been used, so whether those, um, residential equivalent units are higher or lower, um, you may need to make some adjustments. If you're operating, costs come down or if you're able to delay certain projects so that that debt service isn't increasing at the rate that we imagine that it will, um, you may need, you may be able to moderate this a bit. What we would suggest when we are seeing rate increases that are are going up pretty substantially, so here where we're starting in twenty four, maybe around eighty five dollars going into twenty five, probably increasing to about a hundred, is that the city just works on what that messaging is. So we're not suggesting that you're going from that seventy five immediately up to that, you know, a hundred and ninety dollars or so. But we do recognize that it is a substantial increase. So we would just, you know, really encourage the city to, um, so get the word out that there are rate increases coming so that those that need to plan for that are able to do so. The other thing that we'd, um, keep in mind here is that, um, and this is certainly not meant to, um, you know, catch all of those that are on limited incomes, but they tend to be lower users as well. So some of these impacts won't be as great for those users. But yes, we are certainly aware that these are significant changes, so we would just encourage, um, good communication from the city to your review.
Did you look at any of the past, um, rate increases? Obviously, we have some comparisons here from other cities. It's hard to predict the future. Have we looked backwards at what typical rate increases have been with the cities that we're comparing to? Obviously, there's a lot of variables here and, you know, we're talking about a seven year plan, but it needs to be actively managed, to your point. I'm glad you just said it's not our budget. I I think going from seventy five to one ninety over a seven year period of time won't just impact fixed income people. I think it's going to impact everybody. That's way too significant from my perspective and, but there's a lot of variables in here that will have the ability to move around twelve month cash revert, reserves, pay, pay as you go goal, that's a great goal to have, uh, maybe not in seven years, um, because I think that's a, a pretty significant increase. What are the nice to have, must have, uh, within our, um, kind of planned projects and some of those things? But do you have any historical data that we could compare into, kind of what we should anticipate from other cities in in the increases?
I wouldn't even be able to take a guess at that. Um, every city is different and the types of infrastructure, the scope of those projects are all so different. And when those, um, different amounts of debt service come on, um, when you're having a city that's experiencing, um, um, when you're having a city that's experiencing, um, incredible growth versus no growth, there's just too many variables to make, um, a real comparison to say, are cities seeing increases? I would say certainly we do see increases across the board. Obviously, inflation has been a huge problem for, um, cities throughout the state, the nation. Um, so we are seeing increases. Um, more so in the metro where we're dealing with the metropolitan council, we're seeing double digit increases for sewer services. So that's not uncommon. Um, but there's a lot of things that are outside of a particular city's control. We're seeing that here, of course, with the St. Cloud regional system. There are certain improvements that are happening and the city isn't really driving the bus on that. Uh, but to get to, you know, are we seeing trends in other cities and can we sort of zero in on that? Unfortunately, we can't. Um, other, other than to say, we are seeing, of course, pressure on utilities and infrastructure. That's just, um, something that's been a real hot button reset.
Yeah, Rob, I think as you look through the budget, I, I, the data exists, obviously. Uh, how we interpret the data to her point is, obviously something else that we would do, but we're ultimately doing this in the perform on projections as well, which ultimately won't come true either, right? Cause they have so many variables. Uh, so I, I do believe that di- that data should exist. We, we, how we interpret that data and what we do with the information, I think, would be different, but I, I de- I definitely don't think we would wanna sign off on something that finds us, five years from now significantly above others, no matter their situation, uh, with those heavy of increases. So, I definitely, this is not a sign off on a plan and stick it on the shelf and see how we do in seven years. It's gonna be very active management here, so.
Good evening. Tammy Umdorf, colleague of Jessica. I just wanna address the question that you had on the comparison with the other cities because, the cities listed here, um, we work with a lot of these cities on there as well. These, this is based upon twenty twenty four rates for those comparison cities. They are facing the same pressures with respect to the St. Cloud system and the cost of continuing to maintain that. So a year from now, I would suspect those bars for those cities looks a lot different than what you're seeing here tonight. If that helps inform for the reasons that Anna mentioned too. It's not ju- you all share in that system. And the improvements and the cost of that debt service, all of those cities that share in that system, some of those listed here, will see rate increases as a result of that, if that helps.
Yeah, no, that doesn't. Thank you.
And Jed, just to add to that, um, the data, I mean, it's just a matter of compiling both historical. We obviously have our own historical data and, and I know Rob tracks that, which I think is important for us to consider here too of, what do we typically increase year over year? Like, cause that, you know, following that trend. If you combine the, you know, three percent plus nine percent plus one percent, I think it's an average of like four point three percent as a totality. And that's in line with where we've been at with historical, um, increases, but also, pulling the data from these, these other communities historically and into the future. They're, they are all doing, in our regional administrators meetings, we're all talking about this same study. They're all doing the same work because of the, pressures that we're discussing. Not just the St. Cloud system on the sewer side, but infrastructure projects are just costing more. They just inherently are. Some of the other cities are in a worse shape than us because they don't have the development that we have. But thankfully, we have the whack and sack fees that are helping to compensate towards our funds, that some of them don't and or they have a different charging structure. Um, but we can absolutely find that data. I think the biggest key piece to remember in all of this is that it, it is gonna have to be a one year at a time. Where we're plugging in information, there's a ton of assumptions that are being made here. We find that out one year at a time, Rob plugs it in and you come and make a recommendation with your fee schedule based on clarifying some of those, assumptions, cause there are so many things that could change. We have a big development project that pays off a bunch of assessments. All of a sudden, does that change things? And so it, there are just way too many variables to say that this is going to be the plan, year for year for year, all the way to twenty thirty three. Um, so just wanted to clarify that we can find those data points, especially our own personal data points, but then also keep in mind that this is gonna have to be something that we, use and look at every year. But that was part of the design of us going with this study is that it gives us an ability to do that. Historically, we were, I mean, you saw the charts that we brought where it was like, this looks, this does not look good. We are in a bad spot. Now we have the tool to be able to say, plug in the variables that we know are for sure now and here's what we need to do. Um, instead of trying to guess at some of those funds, which puts us in a much better spot, uh, going forward. Tim, I did wanna just mention, and you kind of touched on this a little bit, um, the tiered rate. You might recall us having some conversations about that because of the fixed income piece. Historically, we had one rate level. It did not matter, if you were a high user or not. And so if you want to have some level of control over what your rate is, you can then use, you can do that through your usage. Historically, we've never had that option. So if you're a fixed income in a smaller apartment and you're, you're paying the same rate as somebody in a five thousand square foot house that has a really, really high usage. Now, under this model, you will actually have some control over what you're paying by controlling your usage. And so, that was by design because it helps some of those lower usage. Presumably, you know, not always are they associated the same that lower usage is with fixed income, but presumably o- oftentimes they are. And so it gives them that option to say, I'm gonna control my usage, so I get to that lower tiered rate and my bill goes down then. Where before they never had that option.
So, uh, would this be something that's being realized since we have gone to the metered, system instead of an estimated system? Is that, are we seeing a, a benefit to putting all the meters in and, a rate that, you know, a couple of years ago when we did all that big improvement? Is that something that has been adjusted?
We're certainly getting more accurate readings, for sure, which allows us to then be able to input more accurate usage into doing these studies. Before it was, you were estimating everything. Um, from usage every month to, I, I mean, water bill, every single bill that went out was based on an estimate. Now we're i- it's.
There was some projections that we were gonna, going to increase our billing and that we could hopefully be more accurate.
Yeah, this has, that has definitely provided more accuracy to provide better data for us to make better decisions. Um, which has been tremendous for us. Not only in just staff time, but just accuracy of, of those meter readings.
Maybe one question within that is, are we capturing, uh, more demand and billing more demand through the automated reader or not? I, I think that's.
Yeah, that, that would be, that was what prom- was promised, right? I mean, there was some increase.
Yeah, with the newer meters and newer technology, you being able to read all the volume that goes through the meter, um, is, was the sell on why we bought those, uh, meters. And also the automation it created by having all that data sent to us rather than having to wait for residents to complete, their meter form and send it into the city and then somebody input the data. So, the newer technology of the meters is able to capture all the volume that's being pushed through the meter, whereas the older meters, uh, were essentially missing, um, some of the volume that was coming through the meter. So, since we're capturing all the volume that increases our revenue. And now it's tough to look year over year because of the variability in, the rain and how much people are irrigating. So I, if we were to look last year to this year, um, it might not show that, but there's just so many variables, in, um, how we bill to be able to say what's certain be.
A couple more items that I had was, um, one, I think about as we work to attract businesses to, to our community, uh, especially some potential high water usage. Um, again, Rob, I, I look back to you to say, what levers can we pull? Should they ask for a decreased rate or, uh, some type of incentive? And what does that do? Understanding what that does to the overall model. If demand goes spikes due to that, yet our revenues fall. What liability does that place on the residents? And then, um, I heard one variable that was offered in there was, uh, staff interested in the conservation of water. How does that, do you know how that can correlate to your findings? Had that not been a variable, would we be seeing a different outcome or proposal here?
No, it's really, um, it's sort of speaking to what Anna was saying earlier, is that you, you have, residents that are more in control or businesses that are in control of what their usage is and they can see a difference. Um, so that you don't have someone that is at, you know, two thousand gallons per month, um, paying the same at a per gallon basis, as someone that's, um, using a lot of water. Um, that there is, again, some amount of consequence to, um, a higher user. Um, so in that case, really just looking at, um, implementing some tiers rather than just having that single structure that you do now.
Good. Uh, last one I had is, if I did the math right, currently sitting at twenty two million dollars in debt, and over the next three years, we're talking about thirty six million dollars in debt. I think I've heard it from others as well. I have a lot of pain with that. And so I think it's part of an ongoing conversation. It's, hey, what do we absolutely have to have before something breaks versus what's nice to have? And when do we do that? And how do we temper that? I think that's part of also, as, as others talk about how we temper that increase. If we temper the increase, it's going to automatically force us to push some of that CIP out. And so understanding as a council, uh, those trade offs. Not saying one's right or wrong, but I think we need to be better versed in what are some of those, what's part of that thirty six million? And what are some of those trade offs? Again, hoping this data gives you those levers.
Yeah, and also to note too, that our debt policy is inclusive of both governmental and enterprise funds. And tonight, we're just showing, uh, enterprise fund, current debt and future outstanding debt. So when I present the financial management plan, at our next council meeting, it'll be inclusive of all current and projected outstanding debts, uh, in comparison to our debt policy. Uh, to see where we, um, fit amongst the do not exceed and then our target max and target min. So, uh, we'll have a much more, um, comprehensive view when we review that next council meeting.
Love it. Thank you. Council, any other questions or comments? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, council, we're looking for a motion to accept the utility rate study.
I'll move accepting the rate study.
There's a motion, uh, accepting the rate study. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. On to department reports. We have administration.
Mayor members of the council, you have my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for admin? Seeing none, thank you. Finance?
Hi, good evening. Mayor member of the council, you have my report as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for finance? Thank you. And community development?
Mayor members of the council, you have my monthly report. I would just like to highlight, um, some items that have developed since the last council meeting. I am working on the resolution for annexation of the properties. There are some significant legal description issues. Um, if you're familiar with what the scooter loc- the scooters coffee location, in that area, there's, some quiet title work that's actually going through. Um, we dealt with it when they were plating the property. So, w- we're working with the county on getting those legal descriptions updated. It could be a few weeks or so. Um, and we've also had some discussion with, uh, Stearns County Commissioner regarding timing of this and how it'd affect, um, elections and where people would vote. Um, and just based upon the legal description issues that we're already seeing, and then alre- and then having to bring that to council for approval, we won't have any, um, effects or changes for any of those property owners for elections. So all of this would most likely occur, um, for approvals and in December with the state and be finalized around that December timeframe. So, no concerns, um, for those residents with elections as well. Any other questions on my monthly report? I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for community development?
Just a comment. I appreciated the mill site, uh, update and review. Thank you.
Uh, Carrie, one question that I had that, uh, we chatted about earlier was, um, county commissioner, uh, continued to reach out to me wanting some validation. A property in particular would be the Woodpile property, uh, as an example that he offered was, hey, they wanna clean up their property and finish the wood splitting before they're annexed in, cause they won't be able to do it after. Can you speak to property usage current and what that looks like once annexation occurs?
Yes, um, I've also had lengthy discussions with this specific property owner as well. So, the use right now, it was a legal conforming, allowed use within the township. So, it then results in illegal non-conforming use when it is within the city. It just cannot be expanded upon. It can't change the type of use that they're doing. They can't now make it an automotive repair shop. But as long as they're continuing to use their, uh, their operations as status quo as they have been, we, it's, we have to allow it by state statute. They just can't expand their business larger, um, and then ultimately if it would cease operations for a year, then it would go away. So as long as he's continuing that use, or even if the, a new property owner comes in and continues that use, it is good as long as they're not abandoning it for a year. And then as long as they're not expanding it or changing that use, it's still allowable.
And I thought you called it out really well in your presentation, uh, last council meeting. It seemed like the biggest impacts would be hunting on property, uh, large bonfires or other things that are against our ordinances. So, wanted to bring that up just for point of clarification.
Carrie, can I just ask one more question? Though, change of control does not change the use on the property or change of ownership?
Correct, yeah.
I misunderstood that last time.
Yep, they could sell their property and then say, we've been operating this business. That's okay.
So long as it continues to be operated for that twelve month period.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, city commission updates?
I'm actually handling the city commission updates, um, for this meeting. We will be posting for an open planning commission, seat, um, next Tuesday. Our chair, Kelly Magger, is no longer, wanting to pursue this and his term is up and he just wants to focus on family time and having a night off a month. So we will be posting that on Tuesdays. So we'll take applications. We haven't determined the timeframe, but we'll post online as well.
And is, uh, that individual carrying through end of the term or?
Yes, the plan is to continue through the end of the term until December thirty first of twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Uh, city council committee updates, miscellaneous business. Tim?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Alex? Jed?
Nothing tonight.
Only thing I'd offer is, a couple of us were out at the Sartell Fire Department, uh, golf tournament today. Uh, great show of support from the community, uh, and all the sponsors. So, um, appreciate all the sponsors that, uh, donated the money and everyone that showed up and played. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is, all in favor? We're adjourned.